The November 12, 2025 zoning board of adjustment meeting will now come to order. Please rise or the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been advertised in accordance with the open public meetings act. Roll call please.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Ms. Casarachi?
Present.
Mr. Zarega?
Present.
Ms. Mortimer?
Here.
Ms. Bebich?
Here.
Ms. Valentino?
Present.
Ms. Rading?
Present.
And Mr. Gueye.
Present.
Just as a note, both Ms. Reeves and Mr. Luzar both called and notified us that they could not come this evening.
First item on the agenda, 305 South Cedar Avenue, block 159, lot 3 and block 159, lot 1, Susan Wally, application number ZBA 25-14, zone R2 residential district and BD business development. Existing use residential, proposed use residential moving a lot line. Application variance relieved. Matt, how are you?
I'm good. Good evening, everyone. Finally, my third half and I'm here finally. Where were you? They were sent here, then I was sent to plan and then they sent me back here. I don't know nothing. It's what people tell me. I learned a long time, I've been married for 41 years, I listen to what the bosses say, that's about it.
Very good.
Ms. Whaley?
It's a smart man.
And that is, that is Mr. Pacula who is the two people involved in this.
Are Ms. Whaley's testifying?
Only if you want them to, you may not.
No, that's your call.
How about we swear them in anyway?
Okay.
I think this is.
They can be sworn in from their seat.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give if you do will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
The overall, this overall, it's actually a simple thing. This overall weird layout is there is, there's a 50 by one by 100 foot lot on Salmon Avenue. You'll see it's got dotted lines around it.
We're just gonna open, okay, Matt?
Yeah, it's the top, if you're looking at the thing, it's the top left-hand corner of the drawing.
And where is it again?
The top left-hand corner, you'll see the dotted lines around it.
Okay?
It is 50 by one by 100 feet. And the house is built facing Salmon Avenue. And if you look to the rear of it where it hits Ms. Whaley's lot, which is 50 by, by 200, you look the back steps, the back steps are two feet off the property line.
So where is the Wally lot? Is that on the right?
Behind it, behind, the whole, the whole length, the whole, the whole other lot on the other side, it runs 50 by 200 feet.
So who has the whole vision here?
It's the whole right, it's the whole right side of the drawing.
All right, so, okay.
So he only has a two-foot wide distance from the steps to the property line. He's got no backyard. The way they built this up, I don't know how they ever built it on a 100-foot lot.
Who has no backyard?
The neighbor, Mr. Pacula.
So there's the property on the left?
Yes, the top left, the top left.
Okay.
That's 50 by 100. He's looking to grab, I guess it's 75, 50 by 75 from, from her lot. Now, both lots are non-conforming as it is. This doesn't make them conforming, but it makes them more practical because he has no backyard, he just has a side yard. He can't, he can barely get his back through his two feet property line, her fence is right there. He just wants a normal backyard. So he's willing to purchase that 50 feet of hers. She's getting older and is a lot for her to maintain, the 200-foot lot. A neighbor was cutting it for her, now he's been cutting it for her ever since, they've been talking about doing this, because it's a lot for her, she does not need that. So her lot would end up being 50 by 125 and his would be a little irregular, but he'd be 50 by 100, well, 100 on one side and not a full 100 foot across. There's a, on the application, there's a sketch from him to show you what the rough layout of it is. It's attached to the application.
Robert, are you following this?
Yes.
Okay.
It's attached to the application.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes, that's what it would look like.
In the application.
That's what it would look like.
In the application.
That's what it would look like, on his side. Now, I already have legals.
How will the federal body catch this up on that drawing?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could while everyone's looking, just wanted to go through, Matt and I spoke briefly before the meeting, the applications, I'm gonna say, and I hate to say this extremely straightforward, for something that's as complicated as it is, for just moving a lot line. The applicant on Salmon Avenue, 808 I believe it is, is that correct?
Yes.
Has a property that's 100 feet wide and 50 feet deep. So as you heard earlier, these back steps to the home are two feet from the property line. The property that's on Cedar Avenue is 200 feet long. So they're taking a portion of that and providing it to or giving access to 808 Salmon Avenue so they can finally have what we consider in a residential district, a somewhat conforming lot with a normal backyard. Currently, other than maybe a dog bowl for a swimming pool, that's about all this poor resident can do. There really is no yard there. The difficulty is that in the past, someone decided that, as you see on that plan, Boulevard Avenue turns into Salmon Avenue. Boulevard Avenue actually goes out and connects to Route 73, so there's a paper street behind that. And I think there was some thought in the past that this would be part of a commercial area. That road will never be built because what's next to that is a shopping or a retail or commercial building that backs almost right up to the edge of the right-of-way Boulevard Avenue. All of these properties go back towards Boulevard Avenue. Zoning cut the properties in half. So 100 feet back, there's a line, and the next 100 feet is the BD. So it doesn't meet the character or I believe the intent of what the master plan wanted to do, after the project's already developed, the commercial is next door already, and it would leave you maybe a 10-foot strip or something to develop. And obviously, we know that, you can't do anything in 10 feet. So at the end of my letter, I'm just gonna explain to you that we should make a probably a recommendation to council that this BD be reconsidered to be the R2 district. So we've reviewed this, there are a number of variances, which Mr. Zabel will explain how their hardships. The variances are because there's no backyard and everything has to comply with the BD district, so it's for commercial. Setbacks I have to tell you about that they need variances from are from the BD district, not the R2. So when this applicant comes in in the future and wants to put a shed or a swimming pool, they're gonna have difficulty, they're gonna have to come back most likely to see you again because they're in the BD.
That's if the master plan is not correct, right?
Because the master plan most likely should be reconsidered with this area. And I didn't bring it with me, but there are, if you were to look at the zoning map and then look at an aerial, this is, this is fairly straightforward that it was an oversight or something that historically hasn't caught up yet, so.
Okay, then for the record, why don't you just put on what the hardships are?
Okay.
And then Fred will introduce his engineering letter to let us know what the variances are.
One thing I wanted to say, from what I'd heard from my longtime residents, it was all done at some point because they were gonna build like a Burger King at the end of that street. And that's why they did all those changes, that's why it was done back then, but it never happened. But anyway, getting back to this, neither yard is, neither property is conforming right now, neither. So we're actually expanding a non-conforming use of on the Salmon Avenue property and on the other one, in the sense that we're making it from 200 feet down to 125, she's selling 75 by 50 to him. Even with that added, he's still not gonna meet what is considered acceptable because he's in the BD, she's in R2, I believe it is. But it would, it looks better, it makes more sense, but it is a hardship with him because he really, I believe he said when he was buying it that the seller had to scramble at the last minute because they couldn't close it. It turned out to be business when he thought it was residential. That was a few years, but how long ago did you live?
2020.
2020, okay. So at the last minute, something happened, they got some kind of dispensation and they closed, which made, I don't know how made the letter happen, but it is a hardship. The hardship is he can't use the property the way it was intended when the house was built.
Okay.
And for her, from a practical sense, it's, it's a hassle for her to maintain 200 feet because of her, she's getting older, it's a lot of work for her. And everybody's helping her, but she can't go on like that forever.
Okay, I think we have the picture. And maybe Fred can now fill us on the other area.
Sure. So because we have a non-conforming use, a residential home in a business development district, this is considered the expansion of a non-conforming. Council at one time said this is to be business development. This board is the only board that can say, you can change that because of special reasons, negative, positive criteria, and most of that is gonna rely on hardships. So this is a D2 use variance to allow the expansion of a non-conforming use, which is a residential property now is getting bigger where it's not supposed to be. So the proofs that are, we've already heard about, which we keep hearing hardship, I just wanna go through compatibility with the proposed, the surrounding areas. Would making this residential lot larger be consistent with, compatible with the rest of the neighborhood?
I absolutely believe so because it'll look more like a normal residential lot with a backyard. I mean, to stand there with no backyard does not look like a normal property.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
I would agree with what Mr. Zabel just spoke about. Is it suited for this area, residential home? It's in a residential neighborhood, so is it, do you feel it's suited?
Absolutely, Fitzpatrick's been there for a long time.
Okay. Will it have any negative impact on our neighbors? Because that's what zoning is about, our neighbors, so.
Well, it's not a business, even though it's a business, a BD zone, it's not a business, so it's less intrusive than what a business would be.
So, so you're saying it's consistent with the spirit purpose and intent of the zone?
Absolutely, it's a residential property.
Thank you. A lot of the items, I'm looking at page four of our letter, the first four items really are some clarification on the map, that we're just looking for some revisions to satisfy some open items from the orders. Do you agree to those?
Yeah, I have a question for you. Since when, since his original application, we said any, anything would be resolved by reported deeds, not the plans? Rather than pay him again, because we've spent a ton of money on his revisions, because there were errors on his part, which we've had to have redone multiple times, can we do it by legals? Or do you actually have to see the setbacks?
No, I'll work with Mr. Zabel to make sure we get all the answers. At least we can get a response from you in writing.
So is it still gonna be recorded by deed?
Oh yeah, absolutely. It's even noted on the plan to be recorded by deed.
We do have legals that were attached to the application that he did.
The, the problem with legals is Kyle's office or Susan's office, Karen's office, still should have a plan that identifies what this is, even though the legal descriptions, northwest.
Township records.
We still need a record of a plan. So this plan may suffice with a few minor changes, or we can attach maybe a document from Mr. Zabel's office to clarify this.
Whatever you need on that, I'll take care of it, even if I have to go back to him again.
Okay, all right. As far as the next page, I'm just gonna go through these. Number seven was the use variance, we're talking about it, a D2. And if you remember, D1, D2, D3, this is a D2, expansion of a non-conforming. Then we have a variance for a shed, that shed is being removed.
Has been removed.
It has been removed, okay, so that variance goes away, Mr. Chairman. Second smaller shed that's next to the house, that, there's a little, I think it's a plastic shed or something identified on the plan.
Is that yours?
That's mine.
Does that beat the hit?
Well, I think we should look at giving, granting a variance for that, a bulk variance. In a BD zone, residential sheds really aren't permitted. It doesn't meet the setback, so I think we should look at granting a variance for that requirement.
Last kind of question, do you have a garage?
No.
So that'd be a better, a good reason for the bulk.
No, no, that's, that's the hardship, right, there's no place to put it in there. Especially when your yard's two feet deep, so to speak, in the rear. Number nine is again, some clarification, minimum lot area. Because it's the BD zone, you need a minimum of one acre. Again, that's for commercial. The applicant has currently .11 acres, with this subdivision will have .2. So they're coming closer into conformance with the standard, even of the BD zone. Again, we should look at making a recommendation on that. The next standard is the width, it's pre-existing non-conforming, the BD zone requires 125 feet, this gentleman has 100, exactly 100 feet currently, so that's another variance, pre-existing, but still a variance. Front yard setback in the BD zone, 40 feet. Currently, it's 13.7 feet, and he has a two-foot backyard, so there's really nothing that can be done, again, a pre-existing non-conforming, even with the expansion of the lot, you're not moving a home. So another variance that has to be taken into consideration. Then we have side yard. Side yard in the BD is 30 feet. The gentleman now has 26.8, 24.5, and a six-foot variance for that shed. So we have three side yards that don't comply, again, business development versus a residential character. And the last items I have are just more clarification on what is going on, legal descriptions, and the very last item is that the board should consider advising either Ms. Danson or someone to ask the township committee when they do the master plan again, or revise the, you don't have to wait till you do the master plan, revise the zoning map, and that would go to the planning board for clarification. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, Matt? Okay. Questions, concerns, comments from the general public, I mean, from the board members?
I just have a little more clarity to add, because I lived on Boulevard Avenue for over 20 years, okay? So I'm very familiar with this property, I'm familiar of the time going back where they wanted to open the paper road to go onto Route 73, and the big meeting that I was at, and everything, of course, got shot down. It was a property that belonged to Sal Torchi at the time. Now, looking up the records for the property, this particular property was sold in 2013, sheriff sale, and all of Sal's property at the time, after he passed away, that's what happened. Now, it was the craziest thing when they built the house, it was new construction in 2015, even before this gentleman owned the house. So he, he's really the second owner of the house. So how could they possibly have built the house in a BD zone going back that number of years?
That's a very good question.
Well, at any rate, he is the second owner, he's not the first owner.
Right.
And he literally, when they, after they built the house, because I would come around this corner for over 20 years, well, since they built the house anyway, and I'm thinking, oh my God, where's the backyard? So this makes perfect sense, in my eyes anyway, to have him have a backyard.
Joanne, thank you. Anybody else? Comments, questions, concerns?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we know where the zoning line is?
It is 100 feet back, and I have one of the questions that that was shown on.
100 feet back off?
Off of either street, Boulevard Avenue or from Cedar. So there are 200-foot deep lots or spacing between, because we're a great township, so it's exactly halfway, which is the 50 feet.
So both properties are a BD, one's completely a BD, one's partially a BD?
If you were to go along Cedar Avenue, some lots are only 50 feet deep, and they have lots behind them that appear to be landlocked, they would be 50 by 100. Every lot in that block is 50 by 100. The zone line divides directly up the street, the length of Cedar Avenue, parallel to Cedar Avenue, 100 feet back.
Robert, did you locate where you want it?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
The zoning line.
Could you point that out?
Starts on Cedar Avenue and goes all the way up.
If you were to look at top left, where?
Hold it up there.
This is the zoning map, you can see.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You can see where the zoning most likely should have continued down to Route 73 based on, it's this map right here.
He's looking at this one.
Oh, okay.
Top right corner.
Oh, all right.
So when you get to Salmon Avenue, it cuts over, and then goes 100 feet straight down between the homes.
Wait a minute, I have another question. Is Mrs. Wally's lot in?
It's in both zones. Her lot is 200 feet deep. It runs from Cedar to Boulevard.
Right.
50 feet wide, 200 feet deep.
And is any of it in the BD zone?
The back half, 100 by 50 is in the BD zone.
Okay. The portion that's being conveyed?
Yes.
Is in the BD?
Not all of it, not all of it. They're conveying 75 of the 100 feet. She would still retain 25 feet in the BD zone.
Okay.
So that also would be considered an expansion of a non-conforming, even though it's a contraction under the law, it would be an expansion.
Okay.
But it would be getting closer to the intent, which is less residential.
You good, Robert?
I'm good.
Okay.
I don't agree with one thing he said, but it's not important.
Well, what is it?
I don't think that an expansion, or a contraction of a non-conforming use requires a use variance.
Okay.
But that's an academic debate, and I don't wanna get involved in that.
Okay, we're not gonna be academic. We are gonna open up this application to the general public. Is there anyone in the general public who would like to speak for or against this application?
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
Sir, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you gave would be in the control of the street?
I do.
And your name, sir?
My name is Paul Booth. I live at 42 North Lippincott Avenue in Maple Shade. I grew up on Cedar Avenue. I got over 60 years' experience there, I played in that woods, okay? That woods there has a storm sewer. Now, we go back to the rules and the regulations here. If this house was approved, which it was approved back there, there should be a record of who approved it, who was on the boards back then, am I correct? And why it was approved. That property was owned by a Mr. Sauer, an old German guy, and he owned it there, okay? That property has been there since the tool die place was there. That was a factory back then, when I was a kid. There's a retainer ditch back there that they piped over, it goes right across the front of that house. So there was a lot of things swept under the rug back there. And if you wanna do the engineering work, there's manholes back there, I redid a sewer main back there, there's water main back there. Those lots were designed for residential, and the people tried to sell them because they didn't own them, so they got to use them while Mr. Torchi owned the property. So this lady wants to cut the property off, sell it to the young, I totally agree, let her have it, it's common sense. Look at common sense instead of, we're in a BD development because now we're BD, we're not residential anymore, okay? He's not gonna do anything back there, but there's easements back there, and that's what our engineer should be telling us, we have an easement back there, where's the property line? We got a storm sewer, we got a water main, and we got a sewer main back there. They need accessibility. That's the only thing we should be discussing here, not what's right and wrong back there, BD development area. So if you want history of that, that was a dirt road when I was a kid, and Mr. Kelly owned the property in front of that. So when you wanna talk about utilities and the thing, use common sense when you look at it. She should sell the property, she can't do it. If that man can maintain it, sell it to him. There's nothing back there, because there's nobody gonna build there, because now it's landlocked, because it's built into, they tried to put the road back there, he couldn't get it back there. It was a political witch hunt back then with him. An old man, Torchi, held that property, he sold it good until he died, and then he sold it. He was the only guy back there who let the kids play back there without getting sued, okay? So she should have her property. It shouldn't be up here as a judgment because she wants to get a 50-footer thing. All them houses are 50 foot wide, they all back up to that property. The only one that went all the way through was Mr. Sowers. So in her behalf, I say give her the property, let her sell. I think there's more homework that has to be done, and I think there should be some more common sense done with some of this division development area. I'll be back here on December 10th to discuss my property, and I'll go into detail with that.
Mr. Booth, thank you. This is a common sense board.
Yep.
And there are regulations that although we would like to do things, there's rules and regulations we have to follow in order to do this, and that's why we're here. and regulations we have to follow in order to do this, and that's why we're here.
I understand that, John, and I know a lot of the rules, and you know a lot of rules, but in a lot of ways, with people sitting there. And I've been sitting here, and it's been years, and I'm not here to gripe about anybody or bitch about anybody or say anything to anybody. But I'm telling you, the truth is the truth, and sometimes you really got to walk out there and see what it is. Because there's nothing wrong with what they're asking. And where's the easements written up on this print? Does anybody show them storm sewers that are there? They're all buried. They all go through.
Well, we're going to ask those questions when you're done testing.
Okay. Like I said, somebody's accountable for it. It was approved not a hundred years ago in all of our lifetimes here. So we should find out how that got approved before we start saying things, we don't know what happened. We don't know what happened with this. It's in the ground there. I can tell you where it's in the ground there. So somebody had to approve the building here. And that's the reason the ground didn't sell, because it got politically witch hunted down, and it stopped. Now, I don't know when it became a BD, but now it's business development area, there's a whole other set of rules, and I do understand.
Oh, so you're saying the house was built in two fifteen, is that it?
That house was built.
When?
Back, Joanne, when was that house built?
Two thousand fifteen, according to public records.
That's ten years back. You've been on these boards over ten years.
Right, but I don't know that I can remember that. Could have gone before planning. I don't remember that.
Correct. But there is a record of it. There has to be a record of it. You can't get building permits without it. So that's what I'm saying. But it was built back there. I don't see a reason why it can't be, the lady can't have what they want, because they all cut off on Cedar Avenue that way. But I'm just saying a lot of the common sense has to be used before we get into everybody's variance.
I think we'll see some common sense tonight, okay? It does have to come before us because of the regulations.
Okay.
And then we have to apply what you just said, common sense.
Right. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the general public who would like to speak for or against this application? Seeing all the takers, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. I'm going to come back and ask the board members if they have any further comments or questions, especially about the easements. You know anything about easements?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things to clarify. Boulevard Avenue extends to Route seventy-three. As Paul had mentioned, it most likely was designed and subdivided to allow access to Boulevard Avenue. Whatever happened way back when, nobody here knows. Paul knows something wasn't right, but that Boulevard Avenue, because there's no easement shown on this survey by a licensed surveyor, Boulevard Avenue is not uncommon. I have many communities where paper roads have sanitary sewers, they have storm sewers, they have all kinds of utilities in them already, in hopes that someone would be able to build homes. Taking an extreme example of the Pine Lands, they had many roads where storm sewers and utilities and sanitary was installed, and then someone may wave their magic wand, and they're all still on the ground, but there are no homes anywhere near it. When you have a public utility or a public utility in a public right-of-way, those land, those lots are not landlocked because they front on a municipal right-of-way. You could develop any of those homes if they conform in the R-two. It's likely not in the BD they would come in here, but they would have to make improvements to the public right-of-way, whether the town would allow, and many towns allow just a simple driveway if it's a single person going down the road. Or they would require that they improve the property half-wit. It depends on whether it comes to a board, a planning board, or a zoning board, what those improvements are. So those lots that are now unfortunately divided in half are in the BD zone, cannot be developed for residential unless they come here. They're not landlocked. They front on a public right-of-way where there are utilities, and they were, I'm sure they were installed when that whole section of town was being developed. Because it was always intended to go out to Route seventy-three, because if you look at the tax maps, that's how it's laid out. But I'm positive there are utilities back there, but there's nothing shown on any of this property here.
Okay, so to address the issue that was presented to us with regard to there being easements, but they're not mentioned in this meeting, there could be personal knowledge of easements, but as long as they're not on a licensed survey.
Right, and to get access to that, I know.
They do not come before this board.
Paul had mentioned access. Access is either a fifty- or sixty-foot-wide strip of land that is owned by Maple Shade Township. Now, there may be trees in the way, but you had mentioned anyways.
What I want to make is that there was no hidden nature behind not mentioning the.
No, not on this property.
Okay. Because, Matt, you got the survey.
Actually, they hired him, but I thought Jack Donovan. Jack Donovan did it.
Oh, Jack Donovan?
Yeah, Jack.
So on his survey, the easements are not shown. So therefore, they're not included.
He actually didn't do it. He did the survey, but he put it on the plan. We don't have separate surveys.
There are also, the tax maps don't reflect any easements, any storm sewer sanitary. They would normally be called out on tax maps.
Okay. So as long as we're not hiding any?
No, of course not.
Could that be because they never built and actually opened? Is that why they were?
Well, they could be active lines. Certainly active lines.
I do have a question, though.
Yes.
Assuming, you know, the board votes on this and approves it, what if the owner wanted to build a garage back there? And you're saying there's easements back there.
He would need another variance again to do that.
He would have to come before the board.
They would have to prove.
Unless the township, in looking at the master plan, changed the zone.
The R-two.
The R-two zone, and extended it back into the BD.
But what, from what Paul was saying, there's sewer.
There is sewer and storm sewer probably back there on Boulevard Avenue.
Oh, on Boulevard Avenue, not on this particular part.
There's nothing shown on the survey provided to us.
Well, but there still could be something. I think we should have Paul come back up and.
Sure. Paul, you want to come back up? You have a question, if you.
I just don't want the owner to run into complications down the road. We have to consider his.
Paul, do you want to see this?
Situation.
A title search in a purchase of a home, your email. The title search.
Go along with the slide. This is the property.
We could ask the app.
Yes. Okay. Let me talk to the issue. Do you have your printout?
That's Boulevard.
No, that's Salmon Avenue.
This is the property to you. He's adding this. She's got the whole thing here.
Yeah, that's, that was Sauer's property when I was a kid. That was the German guy I was telling him. The house that had left at Borders, Salmon Avenue, that's Kelly's house. They still live there.
Where is that?
That's right here. At the back of his property line, where you see where the driveway was, there was an outfall structure there. So all that storm sewer gathers on Salmon, comes through there. So what they did was they extended the storm sewer down, they put a manhole down in that easement where I was telling you the utilities are at, and then they turned it. That was all open trench over to Route seventy-three. The reason why the street never got developed, again, the state highway wouldn't open up the end of the road to let trucks and cars go through. So when I was a kid, the factory would outlet, and they would come up Cedar Avenue. Now that the state came through there in the last, I don't know, fifteen years, they closed Cedar Avenue a lot too. Now Cedar Avenue turns up, goes up county.
So if you're going to do anything back there, you better watch.
This right here is township property. If you guys do not have a copy of it, call Remington and Burning. We did the sewer main back there, and that was a job that was done within the last ten years. It'll be on Boulevard Avenue, Capitol.
Paul, sanitary or storey?
Sanitary.
Sanitary.
So there's a storm sewer buried there, there's a water buried there, there's a storm sewer that ties in on Salmon that goes across the front of this property here. It's there, it's concrete piped in here. That was all open trench when we were kids.
So it's all his actual property.
Comes right here, it's right along the side of the road here. This was all dirt road when I was a kid. This was woods, this was woods. Mr. Sauer was the only one that had to extend it yard back there.
So I guess where I am on this application is, with all of the knowledge that you're sharing with us, does that impact what we're doing?
Doesn't impact anything. She should have, he should have it. He cut that grass for years. There's nothing, when we did our improvements.
Is there anything in the future we should look at?
No.
If he wants to put a garage, he's okay?
No, because there's nothing there on it. The utilities are not in that property line.
Right, they're in a right-of-way. Right, Paul.
Yeah. That is a right-of-way there where the street was proposed, and so them properties are out.
Okay.
You know of it. No, there's nothing there.
Okay, once again, thanks, Paul.
That's Clarice's side.
Joanne, do you have a comment?
That's Clarice's side.
Okay. Okay, the only other side thing here is, and it was brought up by Paul, perhaps Susan, you could help, there's a question as to whether that property in two thousand fifteen had the proper tools to be built.
Have the notes to find out.
Okay. I don't remember that property coming before this board, but it could have come before planning.
For my time, so I wouldn't, but I can definitely check. We have the records, so you can go back.
But if we take action tonight, it could be approved tonight, regardless of what happened in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
I'm not going to make them tear it down.
I'm not going to make anybody do anything.
I made a cute ranch for us.
I'm not going to make it.
It's a cute ranch.
So any last-minute questions, comments, concerns, issues? So therefore, we're in a position to where we should, I should, ask the board, would they like to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Stevens, seconded by.
Second.
All right, I'm going to clarify what you're voting on.
Please.
You're voting on a use variance to expand the residential use in the BD zone, and you're voting to approve bulk variances itemized in Fred Turk's life.
Okay.
And subdivision approval, all in one shot.
So, Michael, when you made the motion, did you make that motion?
Yes.
I knew you did. Okay, and who seconded it?
I did.
Lou, okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bevich?
Approve.
Ms. Cazorachi?
Approve.
Ms. Mortimer?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. Valentino?
Approve.
Mr. Zarega?
Approve.
Ms. Rady?
Approve.
Chairman.
Approve. Thank you.
Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay. I'm going to find my agenda. The next item on the agenda would be the minutes, October eighth minutes. I read them, excellent job. Need a motion to approve. Motion, Mr. Gee, seconded.
Motion.
Mr. Stevens. All in favor, signify by sign aye.
Who was the second?
Those opposed?
Stevens.
Stevens, who was the first?
Mr. Gee.
Thank you.
Okay, now resolutions. Robert?
We have one resolution for Marissa Rappaselli, who is seeking to open a second-hand boutique store on two-eleven South Fellowship Road. This was the former site of Hunter Door. The board determined that that was an appropriate location for a shop of which she proposes, and there was no site modifications involved. So the board voted to approve a retail vintage boutique store at that location and granted a site plan waiver.
And the eligible voters are?
Bevich, Cazorachi, Mortimer, Valentino, Zarega, Rady, and Key.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Dan, did you make that motion? No?
No.
Michael?
No, it's, uh...
Michael?
It's Mary.
Ms. Bevich, you made that motion. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Michael makes the second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bevich?
Approve.
Ms. Cazorachi?
Approve.
Ms. Mortimer?
Approve.
Ms. Valentino?
Approve.
Mr. Zarega?
Approve.
Ms. Rady?
Approve.
Chairman.
Approve. I see discussion items. Is there one?
There was going to be, but with Kyle not here, it has to do with PSENG, and it is a homeland security issue, so he will update the board.
If you want, Susan, I can go through it.
Yeah, we'll let it go, yeah.
I see closed session. I've never been to a closed session.
So that's what it was about. That's what it would have been about, yeah.
Okay. So that's going to come later, is that it?
It will come, yeah. Kyle had a meeting, but again, due to homeland security reasons.
And before we adjourn, I see a young lady in the general public. Would you like to say anything?
I was just here for your property.
My property.
Um, Alan River Ave.
Yes.
Variant. Is that enough tonight?
We didn't read that.
So why have I got such a night?
Yeah, they postponed it. They postponed. Do you live in, what area do you?
I live right behind you.
Right behind.
So can I, like, can I give my comments tonight?
Well, we're not allowed to hear anything if an application is not before us.
Okay, I'll give you guys my comments. They're nothing like negative. I'll just talk at times.
No, that's okay.
We understand that that's been continued to December.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, yeah.
So we expect to see it back there.
Will they send out updated letters?
Yes. There'll be a new notice. It was required, a current email I saw today, a new notice will be sent out to anyone that can do it.
The reason why we didn't mention it tonight, if they serve a new notice, we do not have to continue it, so it's like it's not, never been here.
Okay, yeah, that's why I came forward.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask you earlier.
That's okay.
And last thing is, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions of us, understanding that your application is going to be heard in December rather than November?
Yes, sir. The engineers.
Do you have any questions? If you do, come on up.
It's got to be a procedural question. It's got to be a procedural question. They can't...
Robert tells me they have to be procedural questions, not merit questions of your application. So how do you do this and how do you do that type of thing?
No, I don't have any questions on anything. It was just that we postponed because Fred didn't get some paperwork, and he wanted to reveal it. And he asked, so we, he said he would like to postpone it, so we postponed it.
Procedurally, what I understand is that your notice said that you wanted a use variance and bulk variances. And when I saw that, I asked Mr. Kingsbury, are we allowed to hear anything with regard to site planning? And he said, no, we're not. So you could have come for your use variance.
Okay.
And you could have come for your bulk variances because you advertised for them.
Right.
But because site plan was not contained in your notice, we could not hear that.
Okay.
So you could have tonight received your approval for your...
Right.
Your use.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't aware of that that way. I just had the understanding that Fred didn't have enough time and that the engineer felt that we should give Fred time to look at stuff, and that's why...
Actually, Fred has very little with regard to use. That's like a concept. It was very much like when you appeared before the site plan and we said, we looked at the area. The area has a lot of uses like you're proposing, so it seems like it fit, but the site plan can only recommend. They can't approve. So you would have come here for your use variance. And in the abstract, we may have said, yeah, it fits. So you can do it, but then you would have to come back and give us a site plan as to how you're going to do it.
Makes sense to know.
Okay.
Okay.
So you want me to come back all one time?
That's up to you.
Yeah, you can...
I've been two years in the wake.
It's about the advertisement.
It would make sense that if you're ready for your site plan, that you would come in at the same time for your use.
Okay.
If you're not ready for your site plan, you can come in for your use.
Right. No, I'm ready.
Okay.
I think I'm ready whenever.
Just make sure you advertise if you're doing a site plan also. You're going to renotice. Make sure the notice says use variance and site plan.
If you could run your ad past... Kyle still be looking at that? Okay. And then if Kyle has a question, he can ask Robert, so that when your ad goes in the paper, you can make sure it's the right ad.
Right.
Okay.
I did that with Kyle when we put the ad in the paper. That's what I did. I did it all for his advice.
Okay, well, it didn't mention site, so we had no jurisdiction to do that.
So maybe you're just a miscommunication.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
No problem. It is another...
And yeah, if you come in, come in with... Oh, the other thing is that, one of the good things, but it's up to you because you're a zoning application, so we can't require you to do it, but we recommend that you do do it, come to the site plan meeting because that's a work session.
Right.
And you can work through all of the bumps, smooth it out more. So by the time it hits a decision meeting, a zoning meeting, it's smoother and goes easier.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, John. Thank you.
All right, Paul. Thanks. Okay. We're going to look for a motion to adjourn.
Please.
Michael Stevens, second it. Lou?
No, 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 no. I have a question.
Oh, you have a question? I'm sorry.
I have a question for Mr. Kingsbury. There was some confusion last month at our meeting. If we have a full board, is an alternate allowed to make a motion?
No, only a voting qualified.
Because that's what happened last...
That's what happened last time.
And I've been worried about the applicant if there's going to be an issue with that because we had a full board, but Mr. Stevens made a motion. And I was just wondering if that could happen.
Well, I didn't catch that, but...
Susan, I was going to ask you to do something for me because I look at the sheet and I go back and forth on the two columns. If you could make a column of the regular members, and then the other column would be the alternates, then it's easier to look it down at that sheet.
Yeah, it's what...
I'm glad you made it. You were active, but I just don't want that poor woman to have an issue because, you know, there's rules and regs.
So on mine, I do have, I list out who the alternates are and who the, and who are voting members for that evening. So it's what, and that's why you noticed, like when we just did the resolution, I didn't call on Mr. McDonald or Mr. Stevens for the approval. So...
But he did make the motion.
He made the motion, but can we double check that he can make? He's a sitting board member at that point, and he's active in there. I don't think that he can have a vote. And I'm not going against you, but...
Was he sitting because a regular member was absent?
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he can make a motion.
He can make a motion. He can second a motion, and he can vote.
I just counted everything. We had one, two...
I ain't making no more motions.
So the last one was Bebich, Cazorachi, four, five, six, we had seven.
Qualified to vote, qualified to make a motion.
The motion for adjournment and minutes and things like that, you can do.
We have eight, we had eight sitting members.
But he didn't make a motion.
Bebich, Cazorachi, Mortimer, Valentino, Zarega, Rady. Oh, right, right, right. Yeah, I counted.
So, so let's educate ourselves.
Yeah.
If I could ask a question?
We have to discuss.